Wonderful. So yes, my name's Frances de Pachon. Welcome to this interactive session on positive public health from Warchi County Council. The session aims to celebrate analysts, elevate your work and take a moment for your wellbeing and consider the lens of positivity for the populations we serve and the benefits that can bring. Please note, I might mention topics such as suicide today, but only as a topic, not in any detail. So please take care and make your decision to stay in this meeting on that basis. Okay, so we're about celebrating you and I truly believe that every analyst is wonderfully unique. So who are you listening to? So I would describe myself as an analyst, artist and enabler. That is not my official job title. I'm a business intelligence lead population health at Warchi County Council. But I have my, what I call what three words, my analyst, artist, enabler. I've clumped what I aim to do and achieve into three words. They are my brand, if you like. And to help you get to know me quite quickly, so you can obviously make some judgements about what skillsets I have, what hobbies I like and what I really try to do just from three words. I'm a big believer in the uniqueness of analysts and it's the mashup of your skills and your experience that makes you so great and so wonderfully unique at your job. Myself, I have been around a bit analyst wise, worked at Coventry City Council in adult social care. I've worked in public health there. I worked at the large acute hospital in Coventry. I worked in a number of departments there, pathology, cancer research and the programme management office, to name a few. I've also worked in the private sector. So I am an analyst with a view on being an analyst from so many different viewpoints and that's been wonderful to process them in that way. Also, I like to have fun with my job and I should because I worked out according to Excel that I have 6,262 days left to work before I retire. So I would like to have as much fun in those days as I possibly can. And finally, I'm not an expert and I never will say that I'm an expert. So I'll be learning with you now and with any luck, we'll always be learning. My aim is just to light a little spark in you to maybe think about things a little differently. So on the interactive front, let's start with a Mentimeter. So I've just talked about my what three words. You're not under any pressure here. You can have a bit of fun with this. What would you like to think with your three words? If we got to know each other really briefly for a moment. And so hopefully, Rachel, they can go on to Mentie and see that question now.
Yeah, I've put that on Mentie so people can kind of in fact see that. And I imagine people are going, hmm, but just remember it is anonymous.
It's anonymous.
And if you don't like what you've put, just put the brackets Zoe or something like that or Rachel or something like that. Yeah, I find, I find it hard because this is why, all I, this is, this is, this is thinking stuff, isn't it Fran? And but I, I find it quite hard, but I'm going to, I'm going to try and think of some words that might describe me. Maybe somebody else can, can describe. Oh God, what am I saying? No, no. Edit that out. No, I'm not actually. It was, it was a weird thought and I, I'm retracting, retracting that ideas. And so I'm going to, I'll share my screen. Oh, you just, you just, you just froze in for a second. You say that again, Fran.
Um, no, I'm here. It's okay.
Okay, there we go. We, we have some responses. So who we have, if you can step up on the share my screen. Yeah. Yep. So we've got. I'm liking these.
Loving these.
Good, aren't they?
Yes, look at that. Analyst creative. Fun. I'm going to read a few out because I know some people are doing other work while listening to this in the background. So that might help. Very deep thinker, lovely. Enabler, go to can do catalyst. Wow, how energised are these choices of words? Brilliant. Creative, sensitive and analytical. Oh, wonderful. I love, I love the so many creative, so many people choosing the word creative. Great. Isn't that good?
Let me move down because there's lots here.
Oh, analyst caring learner. Wanderlust. What a word. What a word. It just popped into your mind. I love it. Analyst problem solver explorer. Analyst positive mom. Oh, geek. How going? Oh, these are really, they're really great. Thank you very much for interacting, doing that for me.
Okay, these are the last ones.
Writer cajole, imaginary, computer scientist, mathematician dad. So maybe we should put these in the bottom of our emails so people can see them. Because they make a lot more sense than our job titles sometimes to real, to people that we work with. And it means something more. And also you have some great conversations. I want to speak to the poet.
Yeah.
Brilliant.
Well, the thing is we sometimes I'll stop sharing, we get defined, don't we? By people's idea of what an analyst is and how they should behave and how they might interact with us. So that would give them a clue actually where we might be slightly different from the, the image that you have, have about us. Okay, back to you Fran.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for engaging. So when I joined Warchi County Council, I thought it was six months ago. I think I'm at seven right now. I was very fortunate and I, I get to lead all my choice word enable a team of five analysts. And when I started, they told me about the wonderful work they were doing. And in my brain, it felt a bit like this diagram which you can see on, on the screen. So we've got dashboards, presentations, analytical tools, so we're going into meetings, reports, KPIs, engagement, data returns, briefing notes. And I thought, oh dear, I'm never going to get my head all around this. And I wonder if your work could be presented in this way as well. Do sometimes you feel like this is the way people present your work? Now, my team are very motivated people and they were doing a lot of this. And I was very concerned about getting my head around it. But then I took a step back and I thought, okay, but who is it for and what do they want? I don't mean internal customers like people in the public health team or commissioners. I'm talking about the ultimate people that we're serving, the people in our communities. And the clue was in my job title, which is population health. So I looked at all the work that we do, all the dashboards, presentations, the meetings, everything. And I thought, who is the ultimate people we serve? And I called them our populations of focus. And I use the word population of focus all the time now. And I know that there's people in this meeting that are on my team and they're probably a little bit fed up with me using it. But I use it all the time because it keeps me very grounded and centred on what I'm trying to do. So do we stop and ask enough? Well, who is this for and what do they want? And it's worth just having a moment for that. Okay. So I did do that and I came up with the answer of populations of focus. There were actually 42. Now, can you believe it's 42 for those people that have read the Hitchhiker's Guide to the Galaxy? Because that is in fact the answers to life, the universe and everything according to that book. So that was mar, rather marvellous. I have to be honest, it was in fact 43, but I just couldn't resist. If I was to be one less, I'd have made it. So let's just look at this list for a moment. They're not all on the screen. I couldn't fit them all. I've divided them up into life stages. So you've got adults, children and all age. We've got adults at risk of fall. We were doing data around those. We've got adults who use pharmacy services. All age, we've got people who are maybe in need of smoke, stop smoking services, people who smoke, people that might be in full poverty. Most recently, one last week, it was a new one. People with a low energy performance certificate rating. And so it's to do with your house and housing on the children. We've got people, health visits, people who repeat visit A and E. I mean, it is quite a lot, isn't it? But it's really wonderful to see that this is what, this is what the work of the analyst, just in my one team is looking at. And altogether, could you imagine how many populations we look at as a team of, I think we've got 50 plus people in the room. Could you imagine what that list would look like? Okay, so I'm going to move on. So my team obviously work in public health. So we make sure that we are trying to do the best we can for people we serve. I'm sure many of you have heard of the book Seven Habits of Highly Effective People by Stephen Covey. I went on his, the training session run by the institute there a good number of years ago now. And habit two was always stuck with me, obviously seven habits. And that is to start with the end in mind. So for those populations of focus, what was the end in mind? So I had a little think, but really I should be co-creating and asking people that we serve what their end in mind is. But for now, I've just started with myself and said, right, what do I think we need to do? So for example, with adults who we're looking at fall data, we're trying to make sure nobody has fall. For people that are smoking, we're trying to make sure they're not smoking. For people that are using dental health services, we're trying to make sure they have good dental health. It might seem like a very simple exercise, but it's not really talked about all that often because we kind of all think that we've accepted what it is we want for these populations. But it's really good to have an over conversation. So for example, this week I was asked to find all about energy performance certificates, EPC ratings. I said, okay, but who are we focusing on and what are we going to do for them? And because we had that conversation, it led us to the population of focus of those who's in rented accommodation with a very low EPC rating. So all of a sudden, you can start to focus your energy and your expertise on that particular group. It leads to focused activity and focused data and insight that enables action. So it's always, I would recommend a good idea to ask who are the population are? And what is it that they want and what are we trying to do for them? So I'm going to ask, put you like in the spotlight now for a moment. Can you think of a population that you are focused on today? Maybe some work you did before the session or that you're going to do after the session? And who is that? Who are, who would you, how would you classify that group of people? What is the end in mind for those people? So hopefully you'll know straight away, but sometimes you have to think a little bit more about it. So if you're willing to do that and submit your response on the Mentimeter, I would love to see them.
It might, it might take a few moments for people to ponder this one, Fran. So, so I was just thinking, I'm just reflecting back about who's in the audience. We, as usual, we have quite a few public health analysts or people who work in, in public health. And they probably will be thinking this is something they can easily think about maybe. Or there are some cross cutting things. But we also have lots of people in sort of hospital providers as well. So what, what is there? What is the population that they are looking at? I'm going to share my screen. I'm holding on to the results. I'm being, I'm just, I'm making myself like, whoa. Here we go. Let me share my screen. See what we got. Okay.
Brilliant. Again, thank you so much for interacting today. Most deprived populations receive appropriate surgery in a timely manner. The population of England. Wow. No, no, no small ask. Expectant mothers and improvement to their birthing experience. Wonderful. Lincolnshire cancer sufferers. The population is analysts and helping them learn data and science skills to do their analysis well for their populations. Wow. Gambler's, hopefully unacceptable, normal life. My team, hoping they're clearing their tasks and doing various line management course today. Hmm. Yeah, sometimes, sometimes it's a small but very important group of people. And that, that is your population of focus. Absolutely. To be able to speak to their GP when they feel they need to, for proving healthy life expectancy. Again, we're not aiming, we're not aiming low here, are we? That's quite, residents who need a funded care home placement, get the right placement at the right time. That's wonderful. Patients with enhanced care needs get best support they can and raise awareness of demand. Wonderful. Eastern European in the county. Community profiles, ultimate aim is better understanding and better health outcomes. These are wonderful. Rachel, can these be shared afterwards? Will we, will we see these afterwards?
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, this is fantastic. And maybe people are seeing, but maybe people are seeing populations that colleagues are working on, that they're also working on and they might want to join up a bit. Brummies, other people in Solly Hall. Great for brummies. Oh, that's been wonderful. Thank you. Thank you all so much. People have died. Lovely. Okay. All right. So it sounds like you've all got the end in mind, those people, because you managed to come up with that really quickly, which makes me very happy. And I'm just going to share my screen again. Okay, so we're just going to take a moment. Some people are looking after the whole of England, especially that person. Is just take a moment for your wellbeing. It is all about you and you're not a cog in a machine. You're, you're a person, sentient being who's looking at this data and trying to do all this work. Just to give you a flavour, just in my team over the last six months, we've, we've looked at these populations and I choose this word on purpose. These people suffering from, because these people are not doing well and their lives, they're not thriving right now. And it's people that are suffering from the costs of living, mental health, COVID, climate change, obesity, smoking and so on. And the list does go on. So let's just think for a minute as analysts look at this information they have today. And also it's not on its own in isolation. You're also watching or listening to the news. You know, the terrible tragedy at the moment in Turkey. It's just, it's just ongoing if you on the news and start reading what's happening. And a lot of the things that come on the news also are related to your job. And you feel you, it's a job undone to a point, especially in public health. So also you've got things in your personal life as well. So the others going on in your one night and investigating populations that are struggling can have an impact on your wellbeing. And I certainly know from all the analysts I've worked with that they're very hard thinking people. And they both think about the bigger picture as well as individual stories. So while I was working on the housing condition data last week, I was very aware of AWAB, the two year old who died from black mould. So it's an awful lot going on mentally for us all the time. I didn't need to hammer that home. I'm sure you all know that. We want to help populations and analysts do give themselves their subject. And Rachel used a very lovely phrase when we talked about this session beforehand, about immersing themselves in this area, which I obviously have seen time and time again. So it's worth regularly taking a moment to check in with yourself and be aware of the impact that can have on individual wellbeing, both those of yourself and those around you. It can be positive and it's wonderful to think that you are making a change and you're working in these areas and you have agency. Sometimes the way those populations you focus on can get to where you found it. So we've got two little images here. I've got a person here. So on the one hand, on the left, that feels at the moment, just right now, they're carrying some rocks in terms of those populations they're focusing on. It feels quite heavy. Or it could feel like they're carrying some balloons. Those populations are balloons and it's all like weightless. And then they're making progress and they're feeling really positive about it. So I'd just like to ask you, just considering those populations you're holding, what percentage are you like the happy person with the balloons? We'd all like to be a hundred percent, which is thriving and loving it. But let's just check in for a moment with ourselves. It's anonymous. Just check in. What percentage do you feel like that happy person with the balloons at the moment? And if you're willing to share that with me on the Mentimeter, that would be lovely. Thank you. Wonderful infographic.
Well, it is yours, Fran. Well done you.
No, I didn't, I didn't make the fancy thing on Mentimeter.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And of course, this, this will change as well. Yeah, this, this will change over, over time as well, won't it? It will. I guess, yeah. It's just say what percentage, but clearly that is not a percentage.
I'm assuming you're doing it out of five, is it? Okay. Oh, that makes it easier, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Look at that. I also got people around the, the three mark. I think that's, what do you think, Rachel, from that? I mean, we've never, I've never asked this question before. So I'd just love to get your viewpoint. What do you think?
Well, I think, I think it would change over time, depending on what you're working in, depending on how you're feeling as well within yourself. But I suppose that's probably about right. There isn't a right and wrong. It feels that it's a, it might be what you'd expect. So not, not everybody is going to be that person all the time and at the moment, but it, but they might be at certain times. Like, like when they're at a huddle, for example, they will, they'll be, you know, be woo hoo, always, always feeling that way. But it'll, it'll depend.
When they're here, they're all, they're all feeling good.
Absolutely.
Now, I've now just realised, looking at this, you can take a positive stance on this. So we could look at the people down the one end. We also should make time to look at the people down the other end really highly. What are they, what are they doing? How are they doing that? I'd love to speak to them. You know, I'd love to, love to speak to get the people together at either end for them to have a conversation with each other and see what we could do. So yeah, don't, don't always look at that what's not doing well. Always look at what's doing well too. Which we'll come on to in a bit, but that was a great example. I didn't see that coming. So I'm happy with that. Okay, right. So I'm going to reshare my screen. So for those that are not thriving right now, I just thought I'd mention something that really helps me. And this is a free app. So if you've got a phone of relative capability, you can use the free app, download it. It's called Insight Timer. Came across it about a year ago. And it advertised itself as good for sleep anxiety and stress. So they said it will never be charged. They will never charge for the use of the app. People just give donations. It has over a hundred thousand guided consultations on there, led from teachers around the world. And I, I thoroughly recommend it. It's really useful. So while I was waiting to join this call, I was feeling a little bit nervous. And I did a breathing technique that I learned on the app just this morning, which was a military breathing technique. So you never know what people, tools people are using all the time. But, but please, if, if you'd like to use that tool, please give it a go. It has all sorts of things on there. And I particularly liked, it has something called binaural beats on there. I particularly like to listen to that when I'm writing SQL because it gets me in that lovely flow state some of you will be familiar with. So I just thought I'd mention that for those that are just a little bit of a suggestion. Okay. Now, Rachel, I think this will play, won't it? Try it.
Yeah, you need to share the, the sound as well. You may not have shared the sound as well before you, ah, I think you need to stop sharing and then share your screen again and share the computer sound. Because we can't, we can't hear it at the moment. And in fact, Fran, can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes. Did that play, Rachel?
No. So if you, if you, if you if you, if you, I think, I think what you need to do is I think you, when you shared your screen, you need to share it with the sound.
Okay, no worries. No worries. Hopefully you saw the, you can see the picture though.
Yeah, we can see the picture. There's no sound, but it did, I think.
I recommend going to watch it. Yeah, so these, these are some football fans. And what they did, as you can probably work out from the screen, is that because their team didn't score for such a long time, in fact, I think it was five games. And when their team got possession of the ball, they all picked up these giant arrows and rushed to point the arrows at the goal. Please do take a moment. It's very, well, I think it's very amusing when you watch the video that they came up with this plan and they carried it out. So sometimes though, it feels a bit like we're producing message after message about how bad it is and trying to point an arrow at a goal. And I know we have to understand that some things, you know, really do need that attention. But sometimes it can feel like we're picking up bigger and bigger arrows to get people to take notice and ideally take some action. I heard the word polycrisis recently and that frightened me a little bit. And as analysts, we, we how people get those messages to, to hit. And sometimes you're asked to make those messages hit really hard. And I went to a training course recently on how to present public health data. And they said the first you should present is how many people have died. Do we stop sometimes to think about the impact of all those messages that we're putting out there? I know I've put out a fair few in my career so far. And then when I was thinking about this, I was thinking back at my time when I worked at the hospital in Coventry. And I used to look after their performance indicators. There was over 200 of these and they were assisted very well within the hospital. There was regular meetings, people were looking at them all the time. And I was very aware that it was hardworking, stressed clinicians that were looking at these messages. And were they, in hindsight, now I'm thinking like this, positive enough? And it didn't show one indicator I would have liked. And that would have been how many lives they have saved. I mentioned this to someone recently and they said, oh, we can't, we can't measure that. It's too difficult. But I'm sure we could measure that. And I'm sure some of them on the call have some idea about how that could happen. So please message me if you do. And I will start banging my drum on that one again. So also when I spoke to Rachel about this messaging, Rachel mentioned the bidding process. Some of you I'm sure will have been through in the past to obtain funding. And sometimes those bidding process documents that you have to fill in, they almost want to make you look like the worst. You need to look like the worst in order to be given help. And again, that's constantly putting the emphasis on what is not going well for us all the time. So I'd like to again ask you to interact with us around the underlying message. So when you were last asked to produce data inside and messages, do you think there was a positive, neutral or negative underlying message that the requester ultimately wanted? I'd be really interested to see that. So if you can think of when you were last asked or your current, your current piece of work you're working on, do you think that they're asking for positive, neutral or negative messages underlying the insight that you're providing? Positive. Brilliant. Negative. Neutral. Eleven. Okay. That's wonderful. Thank you so much. I think I like to think as an analyst, I'm always neutral. But am I? Am I always neutral in what I'm requested to provide? Am I providing a balanced viewpoint every time? Any comments you want to make on that? Chart, Rachel?
I suppose if, for the positive ones, it might be that somebody is evaluating a service which has been piloted and they are looking for something for positive outputs for some positive messages to come from that. Whoever put the positive, the positive ones on, it could be a variety of things. You would want neutral, like you say, because you want to be what's the opposite of subjective, objective? And you, you want to have a sort of a robust sort of evidence base, you know, informing decisions and so on. But negative is, is quite dominant, I think as well. I know it's not in terms of this chart. Yeah, someone was saying that it's mixed. So it could be, it depends, doesn't it? And there could, there could be aspects of a project or piece of work which has in any one of those elements. But negative. Yeah, you tend to want to, we were talking before about the bidding process. You, you bid for funds to put things right. So you're presenting that picture which is, which needs putting right. I think that's quite, that's quite common as well, certainly in public health.
I think that's a fascinating graph. I shall be, shall be using that. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to share my slides again. No, no, that's better. Okay. So we're just going to consider for a moment just five tips that we've come up with inside Warchi around the lens of positivity for the population we serve and the benefits that it can bring. Hopefully some of these are very familiar to you and maybe some of them will speak to you in your next few meetings that you go to perhaps. So tip one, messages and reports we deliver can be balanced. But what if you produced, can be more balanced. But what if you produce more messages on what is going well? What if we look to learn about the populations? For example, in public health, who are making good choices? Could we learn just as much as if we looked at population two who are making less healthy choices for themselves? So I was thinking, who are these people that are making good choices now? I force myself to go to parkrun every week. So I think people who do parkrun, we can learn a lot from them. What's, what is, I don't even, what's the meaning? But I'm going and I'm taking part in a community and I'm doing something that's good for my health and those around me. People in my household mention, whoa, what about people that pick litter? We have some, I live with some litter pickers who go out on the streets and tidy their community up. People that drink non-alcoholic beer, people that volunteer, people that offer their homes to refugees, people that are mentally resilient, long-term carers perhaps. Could we learn, should we spend energy and effort learning more about these people and why they do what they do? A real example recently for me was we are working on a joint strategic needs assessment, which is a big process where we look at one area of focus across the council with our partners to see what we can do to improve things. So we're putting this together and we came up with a graph that shows all the things that might put people, young peoples and children's mental health at risk. And I suggested, why don't we do the same diagram, but for protective factors, things that you really protect that your children and young persons' mental health. And just to have that diagram in there alongside the other one, it just did everybody up. So I'm just, just chipping away myself when I'm in meetings in terms of trying to bring that more positive slant things. The second tip is around data collection can also be uplifting. So I used to work on the survey for adult carers when I was at Coventry City Council. And most of the questions are mandated, but some of the questions, we were allowed to add additional questions. And in hindsight, now looking through my positive lens, should I have asked, what do you enjoy about caring of those people? It would have given them a moment of positive thinking in their lives and it would have given insight into we could do more of. It would have given them a moment of positive thinking in their lives and it would have given insight into we could do more of and to help them. And give it insight into a strengths based side to caring. So if you're working on any surveys, I recommend if you're not already doing it, just take a few moments for what might bring a little bit of joy to these people filling it in. And then I'm sure it will be very useful to you and there will be a need to collect. Tip three, evaluation, and we've already touched on this. When things go well, shout about them. Celebrate success. Remember when I worked at the hospital in Coventry and the stern indicator had improved for some work that happened in radiology. And I rang up the lead there and said, well done. I can't believe this. This looks great. Is it? Is it true to start with? They said, yes, it is correct. And I'm absolutely overjoyed that you took the time to call me because we've been really, really breaking ourselves to make this happen. So just just that little call made a difference. Tip four, the flourishing invisible. So I was speaking to the suicide prevention lead at Warwickshire County Council, who helped me put this slide pack together, Hannah Crumb. And Hannah said that if you only collect data on what is going badly, we only know about that. So we need to be aware of our blind spots. So ask yourself what's going well with this population. And the last tip, and a nice note to leave on, remember, that's for public health stories, especially if you work in public health. So I found a lovely article that somebody taken the time to write, the top 20 public health achievements of the 21st century. And I'll just put a few on the screen for you. So we've got the smoking ban. For those of you who are similar to me, you'll remember going clubbing in your youth. And it's a very different experience then to it is now. The traffic light labouring system is another one introduced by the government. So that's those labels you see on your food and that display nutritional information. Scores on the door. So you see takeaways and restaurants on the door. You can see their ratings there. That's really useful. And the times change campaign as well, which was a campaign whereby charities mind and rethink mental illness. I certainly as someone myself who's who's has issues in that area to seeing changing the way people talk and think. Around mental health over the past five to 10 years has been wonderful for me. So there's lots of positive work happening. So last time, last time I'm asking you if you're input. So you have the power to bring the positives. I truly believe that. Is there anything you would like to share? Maybe a positive story, a positive few lines about some work you've done recently? Maybe something you've done in questionnaire, maybe a group of people you'd like to look at that you think, you know, would be really interesting because they're thriving. I'll just open it up for a bit of a bit of a free for all in terms of what you would like to share about positivity.
People are thinking is what I'm thinking. It's a hard one, isn't it? It's it's quite. So what we say, Fran, when we talked about this, I sort of talked about. My experience, probably some time ago now, when I was at Staffordshire County Council in public health, sort of epidemiologist in public health. And public health, they do they do have tended to have. You you kind of start with a number of people who've died. You start with morbidity. It's 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 the opposite of an asset based approach typically, or it can be. So there was there was and has been in lots of various concerted efforts to flip that around, you know, what what are people, what what does this? A healthy and thriving population look like? What what do these successful communities look like and so on? And we did know and attempts are made and you do and you do. And there were lots of attempts made to do that. And they continue to do that. I'm sure I'll share my screen. I guess we've got a couple of people who are who are thinking. This is good. It's good stuff.
Oh, it's really important. So often we move on to the next project and then the next without thinking about what we have achieved. Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. We should make time. It's good for us. Good for wellbeing. It's good for people to know what we've achieved. Really important to take that time. I actually agree. Focus on impact, making a difference. Area of change, logic modeling. I love logic modeling. You're my friend who ever wrote that. Yeah, I'm really, really into that. Having access to brilliant new data sets and working collaboratively as a BI information systems system. To scope, deploy and analyse these. Brilliant. Isn't that fantastic to just take a moment to think what amazing tools we have access to? And aren't we lucky? I was using Access at the beginning as an analyst. And now you think about, you know, what we have now, it's just it is brilliantly. Just to think about that second. Training and listening R is always a joy. Oh.
Speak to Zoe. Speak to me. Training in R, teach me. So I'm gonna join in now because it is always a joy. I'm Zoe Turner. I work with Rachel in the well, strategy unit generally, and we do training for people in R. But yeah, get in touch with me and I will point you towards resources, the training courses that are available. My grand plan is to try and get people started in the tools like R. I've got plans for Python, which I don't know yet, but there is some training to try and encourage people. Because when we do things in R, we can share it with each other more easily and we can work in collaboration and share more joy. So I'm setting off people to do greater things and access better data. So please, I'll share a Slack link. I don't I'll I can't do it in the chat. If I send it to you, Rachel, could I give you the NHS R Slack? Everybody's welcome there. It's a very, very friendly place. And you can just lurk in there and not feel like you necessarily need to contribute. But the reason why I love what I do is not because R is a great tool. It is. It's because of the people and the community. So back to what you were saying, Frances, for most of your thing. Thank you so much. It's about the community and it was so nice to see so many people say creative because people don't think of analysts as being creative. They think of us as like numbers and you just don't do creation, but we do with numbers even. So it's about people. I will give you the link, though, Rachel, to share.
Yeah. Yeah. So through the just sort of build on that slightly. So through the we're pulling together our prospectus, if you like, for 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 next year. And we are investing in quite in a in more introduction to our more. At the sort of the beginning, I suppose, of that learning our journey as opposed to further down the line. Because there is definitely a huge appetite for that. And it's always a sellout, isn't it, Zoe? So we're gonna we're gonna get more of Zoe. Thank you, Zoe. That's brilliant. Back to you, France.
Thanks. Thank you. Could you share that the mentor meeting again, Rachel? I think just. I just wanted to pick up on a few of these. Oh, thanks, Fran. Thank you. Reminded you of strength brace practice in adult social care. I'll be honest, is probably where the whole thing sparked off from. I went to a meeting about strength based practice when I was at Coventry City Council in adult social care. So yeah, that's probably exactly where it came from. And they it was a story they told that stuck with me. They were talking about strengths based practice. They're looking at what people can do and what they're what they want to do. And there was a gentleman in a residential care home. I hope I get this right. And he all he wanted to do was play the piano. So they got a piano and not only did he enjoy it every day, having access to that piano to do his hobby, but the other residents loved it as well. So yeah, I think that's probably where it all came from. So thanks for reminding me. Collaborative with BIT, be training and access to software tools. Yeah, again, we've got wonderful tools, haven't we? Working for trust has invested in PHM as a local trust at local trust level. I'm a big fan of PHM, population health management. If you don't know what that means, look it up. It's great. A support the the system wide approach. They are open to new approach. Yes, that's wonderful, isn't it? And people are open to doing new things, including networking across the local authority colleagues for consistent and familiar data. I think that when you are positive, good things happen. What a nice link to my last slide. I'm just gonna share my last slide. It's as if somebody set me up with that one. Okay. So I hope you can see that. So Rachel advised me to have some take home points, which is very presentation scale. So I put them in. So three take home points, just as a reminder. You are unique and wonderful for whatever my opinion counts, but I think it does. And you deserve time for your well beings. So please take it. Keep an eye on the big picture and what you're trying to achieve for those populations you serve. And you do have lots of agency to influence. Spend time with those who are flourishing. So kind of advise maybe just go to a local park run. They happen at nine o'clock on a Saturday in so many parks. And if you don't already go, please give it a go, even if you just go and watch. That's what I used to do and then thought, oh, my school run now. That got me into it. Finally, if I've lit a spike in you, I'd really like to know actually you talk. So I can keep my spark alive. There's my email address there. I will open it up for any questions, any thoughts, anything. And thank you so much again, Rachel and the team there for giving me this platform. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Fran. I've really enjoyed that. I knew I was going to. It's it's made. I think it's. It'll make people think a bit differently about certainly about what they're doing today. And I think just about in general about some of the things that they do. Some of the things might be more familiar to people with a public health sort of background. And but I I like the fact that we're we're focusing on us as well as as analysts and how we feel about things. Now, we have got we have got a hand up. We've got Paul. Paul, would you like to say something, Paul?
Yeah, so I I'm interested with a question about positive, neutral or negative with the data. And one of my reflections on that is it's not just about the intention of the analyst. But you do. And there's a lot of talk about unconscious bias, but you really should be thinking about the bias that's inherent in the data. Around knowing more about people who contact services, not knowing about others. And the there is a, I think it's a really interesting question. We don't deal with enough. But there's a lot more to it rather than what you're trying to do. And I think often people don't think enough about the limitations of the data and the bias inherent within it. And it can be a really big thing. I'm kicking through some inequality stuff in the background while listening to this. And they're one of the things there is just big gulfs where we just don't know anything. And that that skews against the areas where we do know things.
I mean, Paul, this has just been a bit of a taste session for me to introduce a few concepts. If you wanted to lead a session and talk about that more, I would certainly be one to attend. I'd love to learn more about that.
I I knew you were gonna say that or someone was gonna say that. And I do think it would be an interesting session, but not one that I've given much thought or background to. But yeah, maybe.
Maybe someone else in the call is willing. That would be wonderful. I'd love to learn more about that. Thank you.
I'm sure I'm sure we could do a session on that. It could be with a few people, you know, joining in on that as opposed to one person doing all of it. Because we've all got experience of that. And we whilst we may have gone through kind of like a robust problem structuring process. And, you know, then the question is clear. If the data is actually inherently unclear or biased, your your results are going to be directly impacted by that. And yeah, and we've we've come up with some of these some of these challenges before. I think we did. We did an insight session. Couple of years ago on on gender bias in particular. And it's so such a significant bias in the data, which is designed around. Men, a lot of it is.
One of the other things that we've looked at recently is around cataracts and cataracts appears on the a number of the procedures of limited clinical value. I think a large part of that because it's easy to take a post op visual acuity a couple of weeks after you do a cataract operation. So we are better at knowing whether cataract operations are successful or not. There are lots of operations out there that it's difficult to know whether they were successful or not. They probably have much worse outcomes overall than than cataracts do. But because cataracts is visible, I think they get a bit of a hard time compared to some other things. And it, you know, absolutely around gender bias, but it it kind of goes through all the all things of that. And it's a big issue when thinking about value and outcomes and those kind of things. Because that is a really big task around, you know, what actually is the benefits of some of that healthcare spend? And if it's difficult to measure, it can just get sort of passed by.
I'm gonna leap in and say mental health data is classic for that, particularly in public health. We know it's one of the the largest spend in terms of our data in healthcare. But the data is difficult to find. It does exist, but it's very difficult. And I and I think it's because it's been so difficult for so long. So I used to work in mental health. And it crosses over like physical and mental health and not distinct things. And yet, even when I was in a trust where there were two sides to the system, they were kept very separate. I would just want to say that I think a lot of what we've discussed and what you actually raised in your talk about people seeing these messages all the time, we deal with data that can be quite affecting. Some people did say that they and it's a strength. It's a true strength to be sensitive, empathetic, really feel some of this data. How we don't really stop to think about the effects of that, particularly through the COVID period. There was a lot of intensity in the numbers we were dealing with. It comes to ethics and we don't really have a chance to talk about, well, we do this and we know it's, you know, we're not doing anything wrong. There's nothing illegal with it. But the biases are involved in it in time terms of protected characteristics and things that are not protected characteristics. Class, mental health, these are not protected characteristics, but they do have an effect on the data. And how does the data affect the analyst and the messages? Because even if we're being neutral when we go into data, sometimes what comes out of it can be incredibly negative and we have to deal with that. So I would be very, very happy to help with any ethical discussions. Because I think when people put ethic or certainly when I do it, people are like, oh, that's something that I don't understand. But it's our day to day work.
Thank you. Thank you, Zoe. Yeah, again, sounds like a great session on on the make. So I'm gonna give you some business here, Rachel, for your sessions. That's it for me. Thank you so much for interacting again today. That was wonderful. Thank you so much for coming along. And have a lovely positive day. If you can, it's hard. Try.
Thank you, Fran. I I really enjoyed the session and it'll get people thinking. I've just got a there's a comment from Polly. Polly, did you want to say anything or were you were you waving? Hand up or waving?
I was just waving.
That's good. That's good. Thank you. Thanks very much. Okay, thanks, Fran. So I've just got a couple more things to finish up with before before we go for today. And the next one is if I just share my screen, I'll just tell you what's coming up in the next couple of huddles. So we've got Andrew Jones from the Strategy Unit. He's going to be presenting the findings for his significant project. Which is the the growth in diagnostic testing and how that's affected NHS practice. We know there's been a huge increase in and continues to be in diagnostic testing. So that was why this was chosen as a relevant question for the Strategy Unit. To answer on behalf of the system, I think the Midlands, everybody in the Midlands voted on that as one of their priority areas. And then, oh, look, it's Zoe and I haven't got the thing over your ears. I feel terrible about that. So the Strategy Unit's new data science team, Chris Bealy and Zoe Turner, are going to be telling us all about that new data science team. And I'm looking forward to that. And no doubt about the big plan as well. That will that will definitely come up. Because it's it's I feel like it's my big plan as well now because she's she's already brought me into that. And we and we're going to be and it's probably Chris and Zoe as well, talking about on a separate session, I think, reproducible analytical pipelines. All you need to know, all you need to know for now, but there will there will be more. And I do need to mention. The new prospectus, which will be out soon. So that when I say so, so we're gonna have a lot of the the training courses that we've had last year. But we will be adding some to that. We'll be reflecting the feedback that we've had on 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 courses and on the gaps where we've sold out several times. We are making sure that we are putting on more training in those areas. And so that we're going to be sorting out the dates and that'll be on soon. And the other thing I really, really want to mention is. And I'm going to keep mentioning it unapologetically from now on in. Is the Health and Care Analytics Conference 2023, which is taking part on the 11th and 12th of July at Birmingham Medical School. It's face to face. And more details to follow. The website will be going live in the next day or two. And I do hope you will all register and come to that event. Because the Strategy Unit are running are planning and designing this on behalf of all of the CSUs and there will be that's in the country. And there will be other contributors as well. So Ben Goldacre is co co chair of this conference with Mohammed. So the what a team. It doesn't get any better than that. And we will be telling you more about that, but I'll I'll share the I'll share the the website information with you after today. Okay, well, I'm going to stop sharing and we if I can find the right screen. Here we go. Thanks again, Fran, everybody for contributing and doing all that thinking. It is some good thinking today, guys. And I will I look forward to seeing you in in two weeks. So bye bye from me.
Bye.